Good morning. Welcome, everybody. The Stearns County Board of Commissioners will come to order. Let the record reflect, all Commissioners are present and accounted for. I'm reminding myself to so-called eat the microphone, or we're going to get a message from the back room. Will you all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Williams, is there any changes to the agenda? Okay. Members, both of you have a change, looking for a motion to approve the agenda?
So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Merkin. Seeing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Consent agenda. Are there any items for additional questions, or that you'd like poll, or a motion would be in order to approve?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just one change in the minutes under Public Works, the bid opening date. Right now, as stated, that's 2022, and it should be '21.
Okay, thank you. So any motion would include that correction in the minutes?
I'll move those items.
Thank you, Commissioner Persky. Thank you, Commissioner Noch. Seeing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Consent agenda passes. Okay, now we are going to recess our regular meeting and convene as the Human Services Board for consent items.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Commissioners, Melissa Huberty, I'm the Human Services Administrator, and I have a short consent agenda today. There's six items. They are D1 through D6 on packet pages 64 through 76, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you for all that information. Did anybody have any questions for Ms. Huberty? Commissioner Merkin?
Melissa, could you define for me what you call teen?
A team?
Teen.
Oh, a teen. Yes, actually, well, teenagers, for the purposes of grants, are usually, can be as young as 12 or 13, all the way up to 21.
Okay. It was different than my definition.
Yes.
Same here, Commissioner Merkin. But for the purposes of these grants, I guess that we've got a bunch of young adults who are now teens. All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve the Human Services consent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Persky. Seeing no discussion, or further discussion or questions, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and for enlightening us on a definition of teens. Next up, we have Public Works. Good morning. Thank you, Ms. Pike, for being here. Looks like you've got two or three items for us.
Two main items, thank you. Good morning. My first item is I'm asking the Board to approve a cost share agreement with the City of Melrose related to our County Road 13 Bridge Replacement and Related Road Approach Work. This is a standard cost share agreement implementing the policies that the county has for cost share. If there are any questions, I can certainly answer them.
And before we do that, I need to technically say we have completed our agenda as the Human Services Board, and we are reconvened as the County Board. So, sorry about that. Any questions on the City of Melrose, the County State aid, Highway 13 Bridge Replacement?
I'll move approval.
Great.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Seeing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. The motion is approved.
Thank you. For my next item, I have two agreements related to the Recore Trail Phase III. As you may recall, at your September 7th Board Meeting, you agreed with the, I want to say, concept, or just, you agreed to be a fiscal agent for the Recore Trail Construction Board. So based on previous agreements that we had with the Recore Trail Construction Board in consultation with the Auditor's Office, in your packets, you have a project agreement, and an escrow and fiscal agent agreement. And as I stated, this is based, it's basically the same format as all of the past agreements with this group. If you have any questions on these, I can certainly answer them. But the Recore Trail Construction Board did approve these at their November 4th meeting.
I'll move for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Merkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Noch. Any further, any questions? It is exciting to see this moving forward. Someday, we'll all get to write on it. Okay, we'll take the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. The motion is approved.
At this point, I don't have any specific miscellaneous unless any of the County Board members do.
And Jody, thank you for your service. We know you just recently finished being President of the County Engineers, and, no, Transportation Alliance. Sorry, it was a bigger, even bigger. It was a big deal.
Thank you.
So, just wanted to thank you for that work and your continued service, for not just our region, but helping, helping us get to the place.
Thank you.
All right, Environmental Services. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Commissioners, I'm Becky Schlor, Environmental Services Division Supervisor. The first item before you is for the 2022-23 Grant Agreement for the Natural Resources Black Grant. It's every two years that we do this, and the mandated programs include the Wetland Conservation Act, and the Shoreland Program, as well as the Subsurface Sewage Treatment System Program. There are no changes to the dollar amounts in this next two-year period. Everything is the same as far as the grant agreement, or the grant dollars. And again, for this two-year period, there is no required match for cash or in kind. I can take any questions.
Any questions or comments? Or motions in order?
So move.
Thank you, Commissioner Persky.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Merkin. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries.
And the next item is packet page 104, F2. This is for approval of the 2022-2023 Fee-Lot Program Delegation Agreement Work Plan. And this is, again, every two years. There is a grant agreement, as well as this delegation agreement and work plan, and the grant agreement is state-set, basically, and the Auditor's Office has already signed that. And so before you today, not requiring signature, but just approval, is the delegation agreement work plan. And in this next two years, or upcoming two years, a couple of changes. The state is no longer doing a paper registration form. Everything is online for them. It does require someone to have an email to participate, so the department will continue to mail out paper, because not every producer or landowner is utilizing email. And then the state did grant us a longer time period to enter our inspection data. And then I can take any questions that might be had. Also, I guess I will note, our plan is not to change our inspection priorities. Everything is the same with regards to that.
Any questions? Commissioner Merkin?
Yeah, I have one on page 130. It talks about the source of the match. Says from fees and levy. Do you have a breakdown? How much of each?
Oh, shoot, I did not do that for this program. I apologize. I did that for the other programs that were presented previously. I can get that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Merkin, are you interested in the, I don't even know if we can hold off on approving. Do you want to hold off on the vote, or you just want to make sure we get that information? It is important.
I just wanted the information.
Yeah. Okay, great. I agree with that. Thank you. Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve it.
Thank you, Commissioner Merkin.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Noch. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Okay, granted, the agreement's approved. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair. I am Mark Lateral. I'm a supervisor for the Environmental Services Department. I'm here to discuss item F3, beginning on packet 131, with the Board here this morning. The request that I come with is a request to the Board to consider authorizing expenditure of environmental service fee dollars for the cleanup and abatement of a nuisance property located in the Ivan Mobile Home Park. As the Board may recall, over the past few years, we have worked to remove homes as they become increasingly dilapidated and unsafe for occupation. This will provide a better living arrangements in the affordable housing that is available in the county. This particular situation is a bit different from the ones in the past. The ones in the past were rental homes, in which we were able to do the abatement and then recover costs through assessment back. This particular home is a privately owned home. The individual has vacated the home, and has notified us that they do not have the funds or the ability to remove or abate the nuisance, the home. It's, you know, we have had the home inspected by a building official. The report and photos I provided to you yesterday, I'm sorry for the delay in getting those to you, but as you can see from those, the home needs to be removed. So, in cooperation with the County Attorney's Office and the Human Services, the best option for us to move forward is to have this home removed from the park, and we're requesting that the fees from the environmental service fees be used to accomplish that.
Commissioner Merkin?
Did the person living there own this home?
Yes, it is privately owned.
So then this property will become county property?
Mr. Schifels?
The home is in the Mobile Home Park, so the underlying property is owned by the park. So this person just owned the home?
So that will go back to that owner of the park?
Yeah, the owners of the park still own the land, but it'll be cleared off.
Is that person responsible for cleaning this up at all?
I believe the answer to your question, Commissioner Merkin, is ultimately, it's private property. They would be responsible for it. However, this individual does not have the resources to achieve that. The guardian that they have been working with has given us notice that they don't have the fiscal ability to deal with this, and they're asking the county then to step in and take care of this.
And by honor, you're talking about the owner of the mobile home, not the owner of the park?
I was talking about the owner of the park.
Right, I knew that's where you were going.
Oh, I'm sorry. The owner of the park is not the owner of the property, like Mr. Schifels indicated. The individual owner of the home was just merely renting the lot at the park. That's why this is a bit different from the ones we've done in the past, where the ones that we've abated in the past were rental homes owned by the park owner. So at that point, we were able to do the abatement, and those costs that we incurred, we were able to access back to the property owner.
I think the question is, does the owner of the park have any obligation to cleaning this up?
Not that I'm aware of. I guess maybe.
So the owner of the park here, we clean this up, then he's going to be allowed to rent it out to someone else again?
That would be correct.
And I think maybe part of the, how it gets there is, right now, the owner would be losing money otherwise, so. Do you want to go ahead?
I just wanted to point out that, Mr., I'm Brenda Tice from the County Attorney's Office. Nice to see you all again, in person. Mr. Lateral explained that previously, when we had these cleanups, we've had park owners of these manufactured homes within the manufactured home park were actually not available. They weren't known. Nobody knew who these owners were. The park owners were, had assumed responsibility for those homes that were in the park, and were renting them out. They never transferred ownership to their names. The, in some circumstances, they were there in their names, but in some, a lot of them, they were not. There's no record of who the owner, where the owner was, or who the last owner was. We just have the original owner's name, who is probably deceased by the time we are dealing with these trailers or manufactured homes. And so we are, we did the cleanup and assessed the costs against the manufactured home park owner, because they were assuming responsibility for those homes, and were allowing them to be rented out, or I've had some owners of these parks claim that they're squatting in there, but they're paying their lot rent. So they were doing, they were making some, they were getting some benefit from that lot rent, and the use of that home. In this case, we have an indigent person who is under county guardianship, and there are no funds. That person normally, who is an owner of a manufactured home within a manufactured home park, has a responsibility to clean up their own park property, to make arrangements for what happens with their manufactured home within that park. In this case, he's indigent, he's unable, he's under guardianship. County is paying for the guardianship. The guardian has made a motion to the District Court to have the trailer removed and destroyed, and the court has made a decision to allow that. The order does not say that the county is responsible, but the guardian has asked that we take responsibility for that and do the cleanup, and that's what we're asking for today. It's an unusual situation. We don't usually see this, and that's what we're asking for.
Commissioner Merkin?
My point is here is, county taxpayers are going to pay for this cleanup fine, but then after that, the park owner is going to be allowed to have monetary gain on what the county taxpayers have cleaned up. Am I correct on that?
Well, the park owner already owns that land, and has been receiving rent for that land from the guardian up until this point, so he will be able to rent out that lot again if he's able to find somebody to take and rent the lot, but there won't be anything on it. It's just going to be his land, and it will remain his land.
Okay, I guess I'm fine with that, but is there any way, let's say he does find somebody to move, bring a new whatever in there, and starts renting? Is there a way to get a portion of that each month to offset this cost?
I would say not. We aren't looking at a situation where the manufactured home owner, park owner, has taken any responsibility for ownership of that home. It's the owner, the owner of the manufactured home that's responsible for dealing with their property. It's their personal property. They place it, they have a lease for the land, and that lease basically is just going to be terminated.
Commissioner Noch?
So basically, they reached out to you and said he couldn't take care of, couldn't do anything to get rid of it, whereas he could have just walked away and just left it vacant, and at some point, somebody would have complained and.
Or the park owner would have assumed responsibility for it.
Right, just like in the past.
Yeah, and it didn't happen in this case.
All right, so we need to think of it as really two different ownerships. One is the mobile home itself, and then there's the land underneath it. The person here can't do what needs to be done, and this person, because they have not taken responsibility, does not legally have to take responsibility. And so the question is this piece.
Right. Right.
This park has been a problem for quite some time. How many homes still exist in this park currently? Do you know offhand?
Madam Chair? Mr. Commissioner Merkin, I believe there is still approximately 21 homes in the park, something like that, yeah. This would be the fifth home now that we'd be involved with removing from the park.
Are there other homes that you're aware of in this park that may have a problem that will become before this board, at this point, that you're aware of?
Madam Chair, if I was to speculate, I would guess that we will see other homes in the future.
We took a bus tour through this park several years ago, and I don't recall seeing any that were really top-notch.
That's my recollection. I was not on that tour, but that is my recollection, that this is some conditions that can be kind of hard for people also to be looking. Mr. Schifels?
Just a little bit on the tax update. So, from the previous assessments, they have paid those all off the park has, and so they're current with their taxes. I think the question on responsibility for the cleanup for the park owner is something we probably should look a little more into, but environmental service fee does have funds for these types of things, so financially, I think we're fine. It's coming from that assessment that we do, so.
Commissioner Noch?
I'll move approval.
Okay. Is there a second?
I will second it.
Thank you. Seeing a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
It'd be great if there was another alternative.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We didn't have a discussion on that. I just wanted a comment about that. You know, this remains a situation that we've had years, and it's unfortunate to see the condition and the situations that these are. You know, I would encourage, you know, seeing what we can do on the front end to take a look, to avoid that, maybe, I don't know about being proactive, but stepping in until it, you know, comes down to that, so, you know, if there's something we can do. I know the situation, you know, Commissioner Merkin mentioned about the tour and that, so.
The question I actually had was about rehab dollars. Is there some entity that might have some? They may be too far gone, but.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I would also speculate that rehab dollars may not be the best option. I would guess some number of these homes are too far gone, really, to be rehabbed. The answer may be to look for financial assistance to help the occupants find alternative housing, not necessarily off-site, but is there a way that a new manufactured home could be found, brought in? They could move two lots down, live there? Because a lot of the, the answer that we've gotten from a number of the residents is they like living there, right? They like the rural setting, they like being around their neighbors. So maybe the answer isn't a, you know, alternative housing in an apartment somewhere. Maybe it's to help them find a new home to pull in the park to live there, and then we can help them also abate, or remove, or work with them to have the homes that are not, you know, hazardous, or not worth living in, removed, and so we can slowly upgrade the housing arrangements there.
And that might be something for the HRA to look at, but that will be, I mean, it's not generally separate funds available for purchasing mobile homes to be placed someplace. That's a hard thing. Commissioner Persky?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Mark, that's exactly what I think we're looking for, is that, you know, this does provide some affordable housing for some folks. We want to keep them there, but we want it to be healthy and safe, and the areas that need to be improvement or eradicated should be, so that those that, you know, that can be moved in and live there successfully should be able to do that.
Right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So next, we have an update on ditch 28. Property Services, thank you for being here.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chad Martini representing Property Services this morning. I am here based on Board action from last year. So I'm on packet page 133, for those viewing at home. Previous action, last November 17th, County Board acting as the Drainage Authority for County Ditch 28 directed staff to remove a fish trap barrier on Two Rivers Lake, and then monitor the drainage conditions in and around County Ditch 28, and then provide an update back to this board in 2021. And so that's what I'm here to do today. So I have a short PowerPoint here that I'll go through to kind of outline some of the history, and then some of the photos of our inspection out there. So as I mentioned, last fall, we were pretty active with County Ditch 28 regarding a lot of education with property owners that either would be or could be affected by some of the potential projects that are being discussed. We worked with property owners to inform them on what a repair would look like, what costs might look like, things like our ditch redetermination that might reset benefits for the ditch system. And then we solicited a lot of feedback from those property owners and presented that to this Board last year. In October of 2020, the fish trap was removed, and then we came back on November 20th, and that's kind of brought us to our inspection for 2021. So this year, four distinct visits out to County Ditch 28, April, two in July, and then one more recently in September, just to check on the status. Historically dry year, not the best year to try to examine how drainage is going, but it did provide some other opportunities for us that I can talk about, too. So these are our locations. So we're near Holding Fort, for those who aren't familiar with the area. County Ditch 28 is actually split in half by Two Rivers Lake. So we're looking at the north portion here. There's about an equal distance south of the lake. That also is County Ditch 28, heading more south towards Albany. So we're looking at County Road 17, number one, the Tressel Bridge, the railroad bridge, or what now is the Covered Bridge in Holding Fort, the Snow Flyers Bridge, number three, and then, of course, the lake outlet is where our fish trap was. So what did we find out there? So County Road 17 is, marks the end of the ditch, but of course, Two Rivers River continues flowing north. We have a lot of sediment, growing vegetation immediately north of those culverts. The Highway Department's been a great partner for us and Property Services, as well as the people in the system in terms of helping clean out those culverts. There's four barrels, trying to keep sediment out, keep water moving. The problem we have right now is all that sediment's kind of created a wall on the other side, and so we are working as a staff group with DNR to get permission to work in public waters, to do a relatively small repair, just to kind of get those clumps out, so that we have a little more room coming out of those culverts to keep water moving. That is a pending ongoing request. The Tressel Bridge afforded us a lot of opportunities to clean up some known issues. The Tressel Bridge was replaced sometime in the 70s, but they left the old pilings. And so if you think of having three feet of water with all these kind of stumps under the water, they grab everything, you know, cat tails, bogs that float through. The Parks Department, again, a great partner for the system, for us as a staff group and Property Services, was able to cut down all those stumps, and also remove a lot of unnatural debris from the area, and I have some pictures coming up. And then, of course, the fish trap was removed by the Sportsman's Club. So just a couple of pictures. This is kind of our before look at that Tressel Bridge area. A lot of the rock that you see is actually man-made milled, not man-made stone, but it's milled stone. That rumor is that in the 70s, when they replaced the bridge, the railroad dumped all this rock in, so their equipment had a base to sit on. And then you see just a bunch of things that get caught on that, and that's largely what the Parks Department helped us get out. So this is our treasure pile. This is all iron. I think there's one tire in here. For context, if you think of a traditional work cube, you know, however big a worker's cube is, this would fill it, top to bottom, you know, all metal. Again, these were all opportunities that we knew were catching debris that was floating down the river and just creating obstructions. And the Parks Department is a great partner over the years. They're responsible for that. They go out, they clean it up, but I think it's a win for everybody that we get this out, keep water moving, prevents parks from having to spend so much time out there. out, keep water moving, prevents parks from having to spend so much time out there. Our next slide, this is the after. This is actually a property owner shared this with us. This is in late August, no water in the ditch. There's typically, you know, three to four feet of water in this area, really dry year, but you know, you can see all that stuff's gone. So what we're doing is trying to give, doing this maintenance, give water every chance to get out of there instead of getting hung up and then catching stuff.
Chad?
Yes.
So at this point, this was early August, I'm assuming that the Two Rivers Lake was so low that there was nothing flowing out or flowing north?
Apparently, yeah. Yes, sir. This was mid to late August. This picture was sent to us by a property owner. So I believe there's water in there now, but yeah, I mean, it was low this year when we went out, and I'll get to the fish trap part at that lake outlet. Traditionally, you would not be able to walk across the area, at least not without waders, but you know, the water is pretty shallow out there in late August. Fish traps. So this is just a visual of when we talk about the fish trap obstruction of what we're talking about. It's worth noting that when the engineer did their predictive modeling last year, when we talked about this, they assumed the obstruction based on a clean fish trap, you know. So when you see this picture, this obviously highlights a lot of things that have caught and are holding back water, but you know, the engineer modeling showed this to be an obstruction even in its best condition, illustrating the need to remove that if the interest was to keep water moving in the system. This is what it looks like now, and to Commissioner Mergen's point, this runout area, Two Rivers Lake, we're looking south into the lake. To my back would have been the way the water flows. You know, that water was, when we were out there, it's about 12 inches deep, you know, at that point, you know. It certainly is a staff group which is educational for us to understand the DNR's concerns when they say, hey, we don't want you to dig too much in this ditch because we don't want you to affect the lake. Well, and the water is traditionally so high, it was a lot harder to see, but you know, when you go out in low water times, you kind of understand. I see the flip side now of that argument. So at this point, staff assumes that all the benefits of taking out the fish trap have been realized. We have no evidence, visual or otherwise, to believe that we haven't maximized that flow that the engineer highlighted for us. So in terms of conclusions, you know, at this point, unless there's, unless the conditions in the system change, you know, there's a visual obstruction, or the Drainage Authority would direct staff to take action, or there's a property owner petition, no further action beyond general maintenance issues is being recommended by staff today. Based on the engineering predictive modeling, staff is not recommending any further repairs of the drainage system at this time, as change in conditions resulting from the repairs are not expected to be necessary for the best interest of the affected property owners, considering cost, benefits, and competing environmental and public interests. So that is essentially the summary of the inspection report that was in the board packet today. Before I get to a staff request from action from the Drainage Authority, questions, concerns, thoughts?
Commissioner Mergen.
Yeah, just from my own information, there were some pictures in here about the snowmobile bridge.
Yes.
Can you just tell me where that's located based on maybe a distance from the, where the fish trap was or something?
Yeah, actually, I have a map in here. I'll go back to the beginning. Oops.
I know I've been out there, but I can't recall where that was.
So number four is our fish trap.
Yep.
Number three is our Snow Flyers Bridge.
Okay.
So, you know, I wish I had exact distances to tell you, but you know, it's, you can kind of see it's right in the middle. Commissioner Mergen, if you remember, a number of years ago, there was a Lake Association-sponsored repair. That repair area where we visited was just east of that bridge.
Okay, I recall that.
If that helps you. Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions, concerns? Then the last item I have for the county commissioners today acting as the Drainage Authority for County Ditch 28 would be to accept this 2021 Stearns County Ditch 28 inspection report into the official drainage record.
I would move for that exception.
Thank you, Commissioner Mergen. Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Lenzmeyer. Any further discussion? Lot to ponder. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Disapproved.
Thank you for your time, Commissioners.
Thank you.
And thank you for the pictures. It really does help us. Commissioner Natch and then Commissioner Persky. I thought, no, you were just moving.
I was just gonna say, Chad, can you stay in the building till we finish out here?
Absolutely.
Okay, I got a couple of things about another ditch.
Thank you.
Okay.
We are scheduled for a five-minute break, but we're also moving along pretty quickly. Are you okay with keeping on going? Okay, then we will do so. Although, do we need Mike back? Or are you okay with starting?
I can imagine what I know about it.
I think this might be a topic you can do.
I can.
All right, so we're moving on to the approve the amendments to the tax abatement policy.
So Mike is updating the various committees. This is one of the ones that needed some updating. He was here, so I'll let him take it from there, so.
We decided to keep moving, so we're actually on to, of course, we're figuring, sorry, tax abatement authority.
And I'm glad I did what I just did. You weren't gonna let me do it.
Oh, okay.
We would have, we would have.
Mr. Schreifels started to explain this, but, you know, as you know, this initiated because of some of the changes in committees, and so we needed to change this policy to remove the board member from it, and as long as we were doing that, we did a further review, and you can see on packet page 155 that there's four changes, one being, of course, removing the commissioner, and then updating the members, and we suggest we put the Property Services Director on rather than the assessor. And then we had a couple of areas where we wanted to make sure that applicants understood what was likely or unlikely to happen, and hopefully that's all self-explanatory and it's ready for the board's action.
Any questions? I've been looking for a motion to approve the policy amendments.
So move.
Thank you, Commissioner Natch. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mergen. Seeing no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. The amendments are approved. All right.
Madam Chair, the next item under administration is the invitation to negotiate that we're suggesting we issue to our internet service providers throughout the county. It's on page 163, and the proposed invitation is included there. The idea is to invite internet service providers to basically make proposals, but not just on areas where we've, we've actually had proposals from internet providers in the past, but they're always very small, focused on areas that they can, they can know make work financially, and that's understandable. What this is trying to do is say, okay, we have these four major areas in the county, and we want you to focus on those and make a proposal to use part of our $16 million of ARP dollars. And knowing that they may not be able to cover that whole area, we also then want them to propose how they might fill in that gap that is still, will probably still exist with future dollars, because we know with the infrastructure bill that the federal government just passed, the state's now going to have $100 million, $103 million or something like that. They've already allocated $70 million, and there's other programs that we're going to see coming, I would think, next year, too. So while even hundreds of millions won't go very far statewide, we want to be prepared as best as we can to have these internet service providers make some kind of a commitment that they'll work with us beyond our ARP dollars. So that's kind of the idea behind it. I think it's a little unique approach, but the idea really is to get them talking beyond these, you know, those pockets that they know they can serve and focus on in a much larger area. We've used our consultant, the same consultant that helped us do, or that did the plan for us a couple of years ago, has helped us with this invitation to negotiate. Our broadband task force looked at this twice. I say we didn't have very good attendance because I think it was a bad time for some of our township officers because they were in the fields, but we did have a couple of meetings where we did go through this, and the task force made some very good changes. And we will, we will make ourselves available both by email and then an in-person meeting with any providers that want to, you know, talk about this before they make proposals. So the board action would be to approve this invitation to negotiate, and at this point, allocate up to $16 million of ARP dollars. And this is really to get a conversation started with the internet service providers and use our ARP dollars. So I can answer any questions.
I've got a question, and I'm sorry, I should have asked you this before we got started this morning.
I'm sure it's fine.
So it's in the, in addition to the information above, the service providers shall provide a response. It's on packet page 171. There's a series of very good questions, starting with number one, which is where are you willing to co-invest? Eventually, under nine, it's asked if you could meet, they can meet the funding requirements, and then under 11, it re-brings up funding in terms of what they're requiring from the county. I guess my main question is, if I'm looking at it eventually, I get to 100% funding from the county. It's just it's being asked several times in different ways. There's some close-ended, some not, like, could you meet the funding requirements, or some like, how could you meet the funding requirements? Or since you've asked, we've asked about funding at the number one, does it need to be listed again under 11B instead of just other that they come forward? I mean, clearly, we want them to do what they can, and I think that's what it's getting to in the proposal. Overall, it looks really good, but those were the questions I had, was kind of what was the thinking behind some different ways of getting at the funding issue in that list.
Commissioner, Madam Chair, you may be right. We may be redundant in here, and I can review that again. Again, the thought is we're going to want to know what they're willing to do right away, and then what are they willing to do, for example?
Right.
Apply for a border-to-border grant, is to, you know, make a commitment at this time to do that. That's kind of where we're trying to go, so maybe we've been redundant, and I can...
No, no, maybe there's a modification or being really specific in that list. I know you've gotten through a lot of other questions in there for them, but it might make sense to say, you know, we're looking for this now, but also for later.
Yep.
Just something to consider. I think overall, it looks very good. Commissioner Persky?
Yes. Dr. Williams, you asked for a question. It's a $16 million question, and, you know, those are big dollars, those are big numbers, and I tell you what, personally, I have no expertise in planning those dollars, but just for peace of mind, I would hope, you know, that we do look at the long-range implications of what we're doing, because, you know, again, very big dollars and very large decisions as far as what we have for dollars to spend now that we may not have later, so I trust you and Commissioner Clark as far as, you know, leading the broadband, you know, initiative that we have here in the county. But, you know, I'm very concerned about the amount and that we get the service that we deal with. And I mean, that goes across the nation as well, with the federal government spending the billions of dollars that they would like to initiate into broadband. So I just, I'm optimistic about it, you know, increasing the service, but also cautious about making sure we spend those dollars wisely. Thank you, and continue.
Yeah, no, and I think you know, and Commissioner Natch has spent a lot of time, particularly in the area surrounding Belgrade, Bruton, and El Rosa, and we've got one provider that emailed me saying, oh, we already serve that area. It's like, we do have 3,500 places that still need it, and I really do appreciate that there seem like there's some providers that are coming, this goes back to your question and point, that are able without additional funding to do some things. The question is, where do we really need it? And I think that's something that Dr. Williams, Commissioner Natch, certainly myself, I mean, everybody wants to make sure we're doing that, and our need far outstrips the money that's available. We haven't even gotten to the upgraded opportunities. We were really looking, starting with those who really are struggling. Commissioner Natch?
Yeah, I think our hope was that they would come to us and say, well, if you provide $1,000 per potential customer, you know, we'll fund the other 2,000. You know, that's how we want to stretch.
Right.
We want them to create proposals that we can stretch that $16 million as far as we can.
And there are some places, really, where it'll end up being kind of more what they call middle mile, where we will end up being able to get out, but it may be, think off of silos or other places, as we keep getting closer and closer to, you know, where there's maybe one, two, three, or four properties in a mile, how are we making sure they have sufficient service to conduct their business and deal with their kids and everything else?
I know we have the need of.
Yeah, yeah. Commissioner Persky, I mean, that's a good point. If you go back to our original study, we have 3,600 unserved households, and I think the average was like $6,000 to $8,000 in capital cost to get each one of those. So the numbers get big really quickly, and so that's exactly what we want to do, is figure out a way that we can just, I mean, obviously, we expect the providers to have, to provide capital cost, too, and we're just supplementing that. Where that is in the end, that's why we're saying we need to negotiate that out, and we'll have, we'll have, we'll have our consultant, who is an expert with us, to help all of us make those decisions when the time comes.
Yeah, we really do have a good person working with us, which makes a difference. Great. So the action I've...
And it may all fall apart, but I hope it doesn't. It's gonna work.
So we're looking to approve the issuance of this invitation. Commissioner Natch, do you want to move that?
Hey, I'll move it, but just with probably one correction. Under number 11, the next one should probably be number 12.
Okay.
If you're sending that out.
I think, I think it sounds like he might be revisiting those questions just to make sure we've got, we're going to get the answers that he's looking for, so I think the approval probably gives him a totally agree with that. Yeah. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Mergen. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. The invitation is approved. Thank you for your work on that. Is there any further items, Dr. Williams, under administration? I don't see any in here. Okay, otherwise, we'll move to issues by Commissioner. Commissioner Persky?
I don't have too much, although I will mention that recently, myself and Environmental Services received a hard copy letter from the folks around St. Joseph, in particular around the area of the Milk and Honey, and they've had some issues perhaps with some concerns they have about the events and the music that's been taking place there, and they would like to see if they can remedy those situations because they think they're in violation of the CUP. So that was hard copy that we received, so I'll make sure that you get copies of it so that you know what's going on.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for that. Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Who among this august body intends to take in that Alex Pope burner meeting?
I intend to go to the meeting. I don't intend to go to the tour. Done that before.
All right. As I'm wondering who was staff, you know? I'd be, if we've got a victim going, I would just as soon ride along.
Okay. So for people who are going, let's make sure somebody touches base with Commissioner Lenzmeyer. I would normally say yes, but I can't go. I have now a conflict with the meeting that I can't get out of.
I'll tell you what, it looks like we've got a staffer that has some input on it. I don't need to tie you up. Him and I can figure this out.
Great.
After the meeting. But that's the only thing that I've got.
Okay.
It looks like maybe something I should know more about than I do.
Sounds good. Commissioner Mergen?
I have nothing.
Okay, Commissioner Notch?
I just want to bring this up, probably bring it up at Chasm, but Household Hazardous Waste is doing the fluorescent lightbulb collection again for, you know, our ag clientele. I believe that's going through April of 2022, so they can just call 320-257-8605. To, they have to make an appointment for them to come out and get picked up or brought in free of charge.
Yeah, it's a great service, and separately from that, with the light bulbs, I know I've got some more ways to go bring in there. So to extend people, remember, it's a good place to be going. Okay, seeing nothing else. I don't have anything specific, although, wait, I did have one thing, but I'll wait until after Commissioner Lenzmeyer.
Yeah, Steve, this is beyond your role here, but this broadband discussion, do you know? Does this get any chatter with the REAs?
There, there's a few of them, but it's kind of the same thing. It's not in their wheelhouse, and nobody knows, you're gonna invest a lot in infrastructure.
Yeah.
And if it changes in five years, you know, because it's member-owned, they don't want it to become a liability because they don't have experts that know how to do it. I mean, some of them, you know, have, and part of it can be, you know, they might have engineering staff that, you know, came with that background. But yeah, a lot of them are kind of been real hesitant to, you know, jump into the water.
That's a really good question.
The, I mean, they have the ideal situation because you have poles, so obviously you can hang the wire on a pole.
And there might be some with the middle miles that know that other places and other counties have done some of that. NACO is putting together a number of, hopefully more real-time resources with regard to what different counties and communities are doing so that we can gain some additional expertise, knowing that this is kind of a newer area for, for all of us. Yeah.
I would guess, you know, I mean, yeah, I've had this job a while, but I really wasn't there when this happened. But back when REAs were formed, I'm sure that there was trepidation, well, what are we getting into? Well, the more things change, the more they remain the same. And I suspect that, yeah, that's, what you just explained is a rational reaction.
And Lee, there's been, there's been a number of questions about whether fiber, going back to your question with regard to, is this gonna become outmoded fast? And we need other tools too. It's not the only thing. But the answer, but the answer to that is no. I mean, that, that does not appear to be, that, that appears to be where we're going to be for quite a while. So from an investment standpoint, because I think we all should be concerned about, you know, how quickly technology can get outdated, and so that's, that's one of those pieces.
Still have time to drop the ball.
Yeah. Want to remind each of you too that if you haven't already done so, the registration for the AMC December conference and then the NACO ledge conference is out there. Yes, Dr. Williams?
Just one thing I just should advise or tell the board that we were served.
I was gonna ask you about that.
As the chair was, was served with an appeal from USS Great River Solar and Meadowbrook Farms for the denial of the solar. So, and, and you received an email maybe sometime last week about the status of the previous denial appeal process. So this will follow a similar path.
Thank you, and thanks for keeping us updated on that. All right.
We could also maybe do a reminder of all the committees' openings.
Yes, thank you. I will be happy to do so. We probably should add that into every single meeting from now on. Remember, this is for the public. We are taking applications for boards and commissions. In December, we'll be making those appointments. And very much want to encourage people to participate and be asking if it's, if you're from a particular area, can talk to any one of us. Some of the appointments are at large. A number of them are per our districts. But this is a good opportunity to, to be engaged. So also like to remind all of us to be doing recruiting for some of those.
And we've been, ma'am chair, we've been putting that word out too as best we can. And, and all the openings are, are on the, on the website, so that people can go to the website and well understand what vacancies there are on what committees.
And people should not be intimidated by the words "application." There are really some pretty basic questions, but it's really helpful to know. And again, if you've got questions about anything, feel free to contact staff or any one of us. Commissioner Mergen?
Do we make those appointments in December or do we make them in January?
We're making them in December.
I think, I think.
For January. Last year, we did it.
We did them in January, but I think it's typically been done in December.
Typically. So it'll be in December, and then we'll be moving forward. They'll be ready to start in January. There are a few openings that likely will not be filled until the start of that year. So the sooner we get them appointed, the sooner they'll be able to be starting. Okay. Well, thank you all. I hope you have a great day and a wonderful Thanksgiving, and glad to hear success from our deer hunters. The meeting is adjourned.